Good evening and welcome to the Fort Smith City Council Regular Meeting of October 9th, 2018. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and taking a moment of silence for our military veterans and first responders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I bow to heaven. I will be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The highest being above all, and the Lord is our shepherd.
Thank you. Will the first case call at all? Dave Milo?
Here.
Phil Friedman?
Present.
Beth Newman?
Present.
Roseanne Pinkman?
Excuse.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Here.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Council, you received the July 10th and the July 24th, 2018 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they were written? Mrs. Sardi?
Second.
Second for Mr. Friedman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes deemed approved as they are written. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding good compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. This evening, we have no guest presentation. We'll now move to public comment. Bill Gordon, Fire Department Jefferson, resuming the res zoning proposal.
Thank you. Got some new information for the council regarding the referencing the proposed rezoning from open space governmental to residential one of the Old School Property Act, 110 East Fourth Street. I attended the school board meeting, or yeah, the school board meeting last night with another adjacent property owner, Andy Christiansen, 427 Jefferson Street. We were invited to attend the board meeting to form the school board who are the owners of the property about the fact that the planning commission had made the recommendation to rezone their property. This was the first time that anyone on the board of education had heard about it. So, they were not notified about the hearing at which it was decided to recommend the rezoning of their property. Also, in attendance at the board meeting was Safety Service Director Martin, City Councilwoman Lisa Sardi, and Parks and Recreation Director Taylor Cole last night. After some discussion, it was stated by Mr. Martin that there would be no further discussion of this rezoning issued by City Council until such time as the applicant for the rezoning, Tom Johnson, becomes the owner of the property. So I just wanted, Mr. Martin, would you say that's accurate?
Or she had a letter indicating she was authorized to present that to the commission so that I could then pass it on to council. It was one word or the other. Neither of which she had at the time that she came to us.
Oh, is this about a letter?
She was either going to have to have, the transaction would have to take place or she would have to have a letter from them indicating, because she had indicated there was some sort of quick perp law that didn't, according to them, did not exist.
Gotcha. Okay, good. So, no ordinance to be written up on this, right, at this time or until such time that after she becomes the owner of the land? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. If it's ever settled properly, Mr. Jefferson, I guess they have the letters stating that she had the authorization to do that.
Right. After the last meeting, when they asked me to take a look at it, I thought there was no authorization from the school board in the plan. And they were advised that it would be a dead issue unless the school board provided authorization that she was their agent to proceed with that zone.
Madam President, I can give you an update with regard to the whole issue. The school has notified the city administration that they do not intend to swap that land at this time. There is no action moving forward, and until such time, we would be notified. It would have to be a new application filed to the planning commission. I've shared that information with the planning commission members, so essentially, the application is dead.
Good. I just wanted to inform the council about that. So, that's my report, and thank you, council members and Madam President.
You. Well, now we move to Mayor's Report. He's not with us this evening. The Auditor's Report.
I have nothing to say, Madam President.
The Treasurer's Report.
Madam President, the money has been coming in quite well lately. I think you all can figure that out. We now have $128,034.04.
Thank you. Thank you. The Law Director's Report.
No need to listen.
The Safety Service Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have several things to report. Last trash pickup in the city started today, will continue tomorrow, and Friday.
I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Rush?
What did I say? Trash. I'm sorry. The last brush pickup. I was looking at it. Although, already. The last brush pickup, I apologize. It started today, a year ago. Tomorrow and Friday, we'll be finishing up and then transitioning towards a leave pickup. That'll be the challenge, once the leave starts to fall. Cemetery cleanup was completed last week and moving forward there. Just a reminder that Project Connect is the 19th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Suck Center. We'll be participating. October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00, is Halloween. Couple significant events happening with regard to the city. Senior Center next week will be, we received a approximately $5,000 grant through Solid Waste District, and will be, new carpet will be going into the Senior Center. Next week as well, Fremont Road paving and Laurel will start on Monday. Hope to be done with that by Wednesday. Some people have probably noticed that the water tower work started a week ago. We're into week two with that, probably what's going to be a five-week project, cleaning and painting of the tower and such. We have some locations, I believe we have six locations throughout the city where we have pressure relief valves on hydrants. If you receive, I mean, the council folks, if you receive questions regarding that, why we're running off water, it's part of the actual procedure for that cleanup. There was a question, I feel that several questions about the fall cleanup and whether we would be doing one. We're not able to do one this year. As we recall back, because of the flooding that we experienced, we did end up doing a pretty extensive cleanup for that. Funds used for fall cleanup reduced for that. We had anticipated that we would receive relief funds from the state, reimbursement for the storm damage over time. Ottawa County was not eligible for that, so we did not get that. However, I'm happy to report that the April storm, Nor'easter, we had, we did receive reimbursement funding for all of the overtime, which was approximately $3,500 in manpower and $14,000, just shy of $14,000, in spillway repair for the undercutting that took place to the spillways. So, that actually, you'll see some work going on, starting tomorrow at the spillways. And that is being reimbursed. I believe that is our report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Couple items to worry about here. I'm back there.
Sure.
On East Second Street, just east of the park, it's the home between 1306, East Second, 1314, East Second, is the one that is perpetually, I don't know the background, but perpetually looked in need of dust for repairing with crooked sidewalk or...
Crooked.
Front still.
The one that has mattress on the porch, they weren't following. There were several issues there.
This one's always just been exterior fixtures. It was like a tornado hit it. It was revised, and it's just never been addressed. Could you have you or whoever's doing zoning, you could maybe see what might be able to do that? Thank you. Downtown trees, I saw the several plots out there. Can you describe the timeline for when there might be foliage around?
The trees are ordered. I don't know when they're anticipated to be delivered. We've pre, we agree, we've, the topsoil has been placed. I don't think we have filled those. And then, the trees were ordered to be delivered at, on the spot. I think, I actually thought they would be by the end of the month. They're not gross.
And then, from Mrs. Sardi, but it's directed, she shared Mr. Colson's notes about what's going on in Parks and Rec realm, talked about the liberalization process for the parks, and then it'll be closing the bathrooms at that time. Can you describe what park liberalization actually means, or is it just the bathrooms?
I think we actually, I don't necessarily know the exact to that, but I think that we actually treat them so that we don't get frozen pipes and stuff. So, we assume the only bathroom that, I think, for these parks stays.
For these parks stays, but everything else is shut down. Dry hydrants, or the hydrants that are out there, you pull them down, they're not ready.
All the same at Jefferson.
So, when does that, my thought is, if folks are still out there because it's seasonably warm, they're still in need for...
We're looking towards, we're looking towards November 1st, we're pulling the docks last year.
Well, the docks I don't care about necessarily, it's just the bathrooms.
I would say the fire probably occurred in that general. The weather looks like we're gonna have a longer fall, and we could probably do that. I don't think we have an exact date on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Police Chiefs Report.
Yes, thank you. The city beach traffic light will be deactivated and turned to flash Monday morning, October 15th, at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, just so you're aware. Patrolmen Devon Wood and Amy Pugh have completed their FTO program, so they are now out on their own. We recently had a civil service examination to replace Officer Boyer who left us. The results were certified. We have the physical agility testing this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. and then we'll receive with replacing Jones. So, that is all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Fire Chiefs Report.
I'll save it for later.
Save it for later? All right. Council, you did receive the auditor's month-end reports for September 2018. Do I have a motion to accept, first London? Mrs. Sardi, first, and the second. Mr. Friedman? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Correspondent stands approved this statement. We'll now move to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings. We'll move to the second readings. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 33-18.
Ordinance 33-18, an ordinance amended to restating Chapter 919 of the Quotified Ordinance of the City of Portland. Providing for citywide residential garbage and recycling services in clarity of urgency.
This council wish to take any action on ordinance 33-18. Seeing none, ordinance 33-18 will move to its third reading at our next meeting on October 23rd, 2018. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 34-18.
Ordinance 34-18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for curbside pickup and disposal of garbage and rubbish and recyclable materials.
This council wish to take any action on ordinance 34-18. Seeing none, ordinance 34-18 will be moved to its third reading at our next meeting on October 23rd, 2018. No two readings. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, ordinance 35-18.
Ordinance 35-18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to create within the fire department an emergency medical ambulance service to operate as part of the fire department, and to enter into necessary agreements and contracts and requirements of establishing an emergency medical ambulance service in the area of urgency.
This council wish to take any action on ordinance 35-18.
Madam President, I move to waive the three readings.
Motion to waive the required reading?
Second.
Second from Mr. Cole. Further discussion?
Madam President, I would like to have Mr. Martin explain this, or the chief. The fire chief, explain what we have here, please.
Why don't we start with chief? Are you gonna start with Mr. Martin?
Let me just start with me. It's fine. Earlier this year, North Central came to us in April and said that they were reevaluating their business status and that there would be the potential to not extend our contract or increase their costs to continue doing business with North Central substantially. Another meeting occurred in August, I wanna say August 16th, and North Central said we could not continue business in the city for too long. So, that's just what it is. So, at this age of the game, we decided, in talking this, our auditor, our Safety Service Director, our mayor, including George and Mr. Wilber in on it also, I started looking at taking it over ourselves in this direction. We are very threatened. A lot of this is extremely time sensitive. We have to, by contract, I think, the letter stated April 1st, by contract, they're kind of due July 1st of 19. We don't have a good feel on how long this is going to take us to get all of our licensing. There's a tremendous amount of licensing that has to come forward. It's unbelievable. I can't, no one wastes your time explaining all that. But there is a tremendous amount of those programs, and we're asking to get this first piece of legislation passed, and there's gonna be more to come, I guess the easiest way to put it. But this will get us the ability to sign a very important contract with the medical director that ties everything else, all of our licensing, all of our other stuff that has to get moving so we can take care of business. So, if you want more information, a lot to do in the short term.
Chief Johnson, can you speak to the fact that the residents, when they call, there's an emergency, they will not see a disruption of service. They're not gonna know that this is happening.
They're gonna know it's us.
Right. But they will be served in the same, you know, they always have...
That was one of the biggest things that I wanted to make sure happened. Our constituents are the most important. Your constituents, this city. And we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna stand and change that our citizens could suffer. We are still leaning towards full ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We are gonna be there when you need us, and all the changes is, it's really just changing the days. We ran the EMS service from 1976 until 15 years ago, when we did a darn good deal on that. It went away. I'm sorry it did. Now we have the opportunity to take it back, and I promise you
Any other questions?
Did they give a reason?
It's financial. It's all money.
Oh, economics.
It's all economics, and it's regardless of what it is, you know, at the time. Our relationship and everything, it was, it's mine. But like I said, it's all economics. And maybe you sit down and look at it. I did, from personal experience, I was darn glad they were there two years ago last week. You can't put money on that type of stuff. We are looking at it physically. How is that, Mr. Rafferty? He's with a cringe, but we are looking at it physically to make sure that we don't lose anything. Because a lot of it's a moving target, there's so many things going on. The bottom line is, is our citizens, Porch Township, if it looks like Bay Township, we would take care of that, just like North Central did, and we'll be providing them services. Chief?
Yes.
This is the first I've seen anything, I guess, on paper or in any detail about it. So, when you say you need this for signing, for authorization to sign an agreement with the medical director, medical director sounds like money. So, can you talk about that process? Is the next step is, who that is?
The medical director right now is called Northwest Ohio Medical Association. Their, it's PDB, is it PDS, is that a new name? It's a consortium that takes care of 36 communities throughout Iowa. That takes care of medical protocols and how to serve, how to serve the people. Danbury uses them, Big County uses them, St. Vincent uses them, but they are, they are the people that say, when you go on a call, this is what you're permitted to do, what you're permitted to have.
And you're required to have?
You are required by law to have one. We went this route because a lot of the people that we are going to work with at our station are using their protocol. They have a much broader sense than any medical director that was available through our local hospital. EMTs and UTIs can go further than what they can with the local direction. We elected to go this route to give the citizens what they're, it's the opportunity. I hope we never have to use it, but you know, a medical director, and you have to have a medical director in place to register with the state. And that is one of the big mistakes that happened when they went away 15 years ago. We lost our registration. So, the first thing I have to do is get registered back to the state. The next thing we have to do is get a license to the board of pharmacy to carry the drugs. Medical director, one, has to supply what that drug will be, or what the drug list will be, and they have to sign it also. Then it goes into another company that we're looking at to assist with billing and things like that. They need to work with the medical director on the term. So, the medical director, they're the big key.
What size, respect that contract, and then go back to council.
It's an agreement that's $3,000.
Right now, $6,000 a year. Your first couple of years, and then it's to adjust. It's going to follow up on what the chief's saying. Premier Physicians and Services is a name company, it's a medical corporation based on Dayton. It provides emergency care services for hospitals and in-depth organizations. At least works in this area of the city.
Talk about revenue of the service months up and running? Talk about going, EMS generating revenue?
Breaking. That's what we're bringing. There is the opportunity, it's gonna cost you money. There is that opportunity, that it will cost you money. I'll just, I guess we can speak about it out loud.
Yeah.
We're looking at that potential, the first year when we hit the ground running is a break even because of the group of the fire department. So, we're break even when we start. Opportunity.
On a fund basis, if not?
On a fund basis.
Agency basis.
At the end, it's all one agency. That's a very key point that you want. It's a very key point that we want to remember. It's all one agency at this stage. Our first projections were 120 to 140 of a loss at the end of first year. When North Central came to us, it was to figure, you're still ahead of the game by $8,000. They wanted over $200,000 to take the service away. So, we can do all of this, and it's gonna cost $120,000, or we can pay them $200,000 and not change anything. You're still losing $8,000 on us.
It's not dealing apples to apples on that one. Either on cost of, then that $120,000, the additional out of pocket, so it's still cost of all. It's all projection at this point in time. Yeah, something needs to be done. There are many questions on that. Decision that council's definitely made, because, you know, you're creating new divisions within, you know, additional needs that are needed, full-time based supervision of that. You're gonna need new equipment, different equipment. You're gonna have cost of operation, maintenance in place for that. You're gonna have insurance, numbers that you need to deal with. Said, protocols and regulations go along with that. You know, those are all things that you need to go in with your eyes open and be ready to address the considerations. We're gonna be coming back with, what are the billing costs, and the council's gonna have to go out that legislation saying this is what the cost per run is going to be. So, it's a billing service that takes care of the billing for us, and after they collect insurance payments, they get it out there, insurance reimbursements. If you looked into it, well, they're not going up regarding the paper, the state service. So, then what do you do with the shortfall? Do you bill again to the client, or does the city cover that as part of goods? Love you that it has up there. And how do you deal with the townships, the same type of things? These are all issues that need to be addressed through this whole process. Those are things that you just need to keep in mind, and that you're worried of, and you need to evaluate on making the decisions. All of them, not just type of differences.
Tonight's issue, though, is just to allow chief to go ahead and sign the contract.
Well, it's part of the process of going, is to authorize going ahead and forming a service within the department to operate an emergency medical service department. Some of the initial steps on that are the medical directors' contract, the pharmacy contract of the hospital that will provide the drugs and things that are necessary to do with that. But, you know, once you're going down this road, you're going down this road. And so, that's, it's kind of alluded to. We've got forty township we have to take care of, just from our prior commitments to them. And also, a township that's without the ambulance service. This, I remember he sat there and shaved his head because he was at the table when North Central came to the city, and it was a tough decision on council at that point in time as to how to proceed and how to deal with that. So, he's well aware of the weight that comes along with that. That was a protracted process of getting to that point and making those agreements and working those things out, and it's worked for the perfect time. And it was a lucrative business to begin. Maybe North Central's still be here. But it did for quite a while, and it's come to a point, I think because of the changes in their own thing, that they're refocusing their business fund. And so, the city has to be sure its business is not going forward. We've got somebody good that runs apartments. We have a question about that. And it's what the city's come down to. What can we do, or going to do with your eyes open?
Chief, for Mr. Martin, can either one of you speak to some of the issues that have happened more recently with North Central? I know, and how you guys have maybe had to cover calls with them, or how many EMTs are certified on your, on your roster right now?
I don't.
I mean, I...
I don't. I'm not gonna swing anybody on the North Central, all right?
That's not what I'm asking for.
But we are fully made right now in our department. But we are fully made right now in our department on board staff. This is something that was didn't happen fifteen years ago. I've got five paramedics on staff with commitments, I have three additional paramedics that want to leave North Central and come to us because of the weekend. I have eleven EMTs, five UTIs, and I've got six kids sitting in class right down to April, we've got UTIs. So staffing's on the, I guess the easiest way to put it. The way it operates is North Central has one truck stacked. And when that truck goes out, there's another truck that is supposed to be there all the time. When it's not, we call for Catawba, who can't muster right now, we call for Erie that can't muster right now, we call for Danbury Township. If that bus is there, then the Porcelain Fire Department, who will meet you later, takes that truck and we go under service. We did two-hundred-and-sixty-one cost of service lines against their eleven. You know, Mr. Wilber mentioned the billing aspect of it. Everyone that's used that bus for North Central, it's a, it's a change. So, and that's, those are things that I agree with, I agree with what Mr. Wilber's saying, open, wide open. But trust me, I've looked at a lot of different options right now in the short term, not in this bit. I'll, I'll ask you.
So there's an alternative service out there?
There is, it's the same money. I have one, no, three hundred thousand dollars, they can be glad with it, three hundred grand. And the bottom line is, is I guess the easiest way to put it, and this is just Kent Johnson Fire Chief speaking out here, I'm already picking up the North Central cost out of our levy, which doesn't necessarily have to happen. I don't pay two hundred thousand dollars right now with that funding for that, to pick up, you know, additional two hundred thousand. It's gotta come from somewhere. So whether we run our own emergency service or we keep North Central, money's coming from somewhere. So, I'm confident we can look at this in the right way, and I understand what went on fifteen years ago. I was here. I was here, we could be the government. It's a whole management team. Look at your people that are there.
How many buses have you been before, Ken?
I've got one sitting on the floor and another, I've got them on. We can't wait, there's a couple of other things, and these are all purchases that are well within our department's position. All right? We're allowed to spend about two fifty-five or forty-nine-nine without asking. I just bought a U of S for us, five thousand dollars, we're being extremely good with our money. I bought a two-thousand Ford F-350, or E-350, it was twenty-two thousand miles on it, it sat down there, it was five thousand dollars. I've got another one coming tomorrow, it's got eighty-one thousand miles on it, put it there for nine thousand. The disadvantage is, is we have to equip every piece of equipment with purchase. When North Central came in, there was a agreement that they took everything, and they paid us forty thousand dollars, I think is what the number was, give or take a buck. We went to them, and when they were sitting in the meeting, Mr. Wilber, Mr. Martin and I were in, fully glad to help you get started, and we'll help you with equipment, we're helping with this, stop the days, they're not willing to help us. This is all coming out of our pocket. We are prepared to do it. We have the funds to start this thing, April, one, July, at break even. And I'm very proud of that. That's including all the equipment that's being processed. So, we're looking at two buses, they are less equipped, but the opportunity to put those things kind of go through.
I would, I'd like to just add, if I can, since the April letter that we did receive from North Central EMS, that led to a meeting with them a short time after that, late May, early June, I guess it was, early June, when they came here. And we asked for some specific things because they were indicating there would be an increase, but they weren't specific about that dollar amount. And we, one of the things that we asked for, we wanted to see financials that our contract called for, and there was some reluctance on what they wanted to share, did not want to share, what they would share, that led us to start to look at initiating a process to go down this road. And we didn't wait. The other townships came to us, and they were concerned, they were gonna be in the same position we were then, when we got the dollar amounts. Looked at the financials, Mr. Wilber was consulted, we were able to get a meeting with the hospital, and they came into that meeting, or with North Central, and they came into the meeting and let us know that the meeting wasn't to discuss or negotiate a price, it was to tell us they were done. And the question was posed to them, what would that dollar amount be? And that's when the astronomical, they've been increased by eighty thousand dollars from the initial meeting. We had looked at the follow-up to the original letter. So, that was a no-brainer. And we've continued with that since then, and consulted with other agencies, those that are excited. I know that we've spoken about it in committee.
The meeting on August sixteenth was attended in Houghton. I wanted to do the session, I wanted to, hey, let's talk, can we do some free rent, can we do this, can we do that? Because to be honest with you, sixty years old, this isn't one of my goals before my retirement. But it was very important for me to say that, like Mr. Martin said, they had no interest.
If I just follow up on that, I may, the, yeah, the meeting on August eighteenth, fire station, when they came in and the cities were just looking, it was, see where they are. And they had their, their chief, they had the service that they had. And he said, yeah, they've looked at their business, you know, and it's, those areas is too far from their home base, and they, and they're just, because they're building in one year for, and they're, and they did say they would cooperate with us, and what discussions we've had there, but they did say that no, we're not getting any of it. But, but they thought, they wanted, it's a new thing. You know, I've been in touch with the city of Norwalk, they're going through the same thing, their contract comes due April, makes sure. And the flood retro there has indicated that, you know, currently there's a better feel over there because it's their home base, they are sharing information. The city is evaluating whether it wants to stay with them, whether it wants to take over itself, or whether it wants to bring it to. And I think the one that you mentioned about the million is the one I think it's talking about, that's the sense that I got. Their colleagues and everybody, the, but, but they're crunching their numbers, they're getting some consultants, and they're taking a look at some of those things, and advising the city as to, and pluses and minuses of those things. We're all kind of in this area facing the same thing, the million, they drop a million or something, and they want, and then Woodville is in a similar situation there, it may be a rank listing, and different, the million township starts their own department. But it's not unheard of, it's something that, you need to do your due diligence.
So, for this people, under the fire department budget and all that, et cetera?
It's gonna be, drop my daughter, but, you know, ten is right now, so drop, right, enter, fire two-two-seven, yeah. Or, Mr. Hatfield, I talked about setting up some different line items, traction, things.
Best people we have been before.
It's, it's not two-seven, the department says what the modus was.
Madam President, I would like to thank these people who were involved, I am on emergency services as are Mr. Wilber and this Gilman. We have spent a lot of time listening about this, I think that what we are doing here is prudent, and I would like to make sure that this goes through today. I, I also read other newspapers and see that this is a problem, not just right here, but in other parts of Ohio, as well as Michigan and Pennsylvania. I don't want us to be caught in a lurch because we haven't compared the needs. And I think we are in the process of being compared with what we have indoors this evening. Any questions?
Ms. Phillips, is your committee taking up ordinance thirty-five eighteen?
Sorry?
Has your committee looked at ordinance thirty-five eighteen?
This one we're talking about, yes, we've talked about it two or three of the last three meetings, it's, yeah, it's.
Mr. Hatfield?
Yes, sir.
I'd be remiss if you had to speak about this.
Speaking strictly from a financial perspective, I agree that there is a little bit, there's still some projections. It comes down to, again, strictly from a financial perspective, is that, at least my feeling personally, is that with North Central, if that were still an option, we know those costs, that's an additional two-hundred thousand dollar cost, I would know. With this, I, my initial projections say a loss, but I've also seen entities where they're able to have these break even or make money. So it's kind of, do you, I hate being this way, but you're kind of put in a position where you take a risk and come out ahead, or do you know that you have some costs in the two-hundred thousand dollars that you're gonna have? Unfortunately, now it seems to know that that two-hundred thousand dollar loss is a little bit houching with North Central, not willing to take part in providing service. So unfortunately, I think we're in a position now, or backed or against the law, we have to do something, and from my research, this seems to be most proving an option, that we can find. Are there some financial obligations? Yes, there are, but even if North Central was an option, we still have those financial obligations involved too. So, this is kind of my two cents.
So at this stage, just for thirty-five eighteen, you think it warrants further investigation? At this point?
At this point, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with thirty-five eighteen, the way that it's written, and at least moving in that direction, it's a six thousand dollar cost, but it's something that we're more likely have, gonna have to do anyway. So I don't, I don't see, foresee any benefit, and with the exception of law and council to take the time to do more research on their own, strictly from a financial perspective, I don't see any benefit. But again, that's a cost basis.
Mr. Martin, can I ask you the same question? At the end of the answer, to get your spirit to this, but?
Yeah, I mean, I.
If they're talking about Norwalk doing consults to take into the numbers and look at where savings or revenue generated, is that something that we should consider?
You know, I, we discussed this several months ago, you know, and the, what Norwalk is looking at, what, what Life Care has proposed, and kind of reaching out to us, and having a little bit of experience from my previous presidents and the Life Cares, and working with them. Good organization, but I know what they were proposing, comparing what they're looking at with other organizations. A study, you know, to, to look at a feasibility study, at this point, I don't, it seems to be that we're traveling down the right direction with this project, I don't think that we're sprinting, and we're taking it very deliberately, and we've looked at it in such a way, I think that the ordinance itself speaks to that, in that it's not just a blanket for me to sign, sign contracts or buy the city to talk specifically, unlike some other ordinances that, about consulting, and then our team that we, you know, that's made up of Mr. Wilber and Mr. Hatfield, the mayor, that, that we continue to meet and work with, so I think it's good, I think it's most definitely in the best interest of the city for this, for the care that's there. I don't know of a better game that's going to be in town.
Mr. Wilber, can I ask you the same question?
I think you've heard of it, so, you can study things to death. Things do need to be done, but it's one, get as much of the bad together as you can to make sure that the city is making is the best one you can. I think for now, you know, something needs to be done, but I think for the long term, there needs to be a better plan where we're working. And I think it's not just the city and Portage Township, that we're, and I think looking at what's developed in the whole area over the last fifteen years, that, you know, the service needs to be broader than just those areas to be fiscally sound and able to get the work. And Kent alluded to, you know, Catawba, I haven't there been some issues on a manhole. So, and that is an area that's going to need assistance in the future, and a broader solution should be in the service. But that doesn't solve anything. Services out there need to bring in, to help you look at those things. They don't make the decision, they don't, they can provide the talent that helps you value the day of this incident.
Madam President? Mrs. Sir? Is that looking beyond the township, is that something for you to take into consideration?
We have MOUs, you may township, Porish township, but they want us to keep there. The MOUs have been in our hands for some time, everybody on the team has got them, they want us to keep them up there. We've submitted some costs on how to do that, et cetera, et cetera. I guess, I guess the easiest way to put it, from, from my perspective, and not being who I am, but this is the time right here. You know, what Mr. Wilber's talking about, is looking possibly, looking at a district and, and those type of things, and is there an ambulance district or something needed here at some point? But we're, we're dealing with, I don't, if you're looking at a study, that is how long? Our contract with the medical director is, I think they're asking for three years, so very near three-year period, it's nothing saying you can't look at something else. But I'm also saying that, you know, I'm not standing this thing behind, they earned their money and I got their finances. And that's one thing that I've researched, we're on three-hundred-plus runs per year than we are. Those are, those are other things. Mid County is a break even scenario. So, I have looked at some of this stuff, and as fast as this is coming along, a lot of people see the information, a lot of people study the information that I've put together, but there's, I don't know how to put it, either we do it or we don't, you know, and that's your guys' call. Right now, this is the best scenario, you know, and from my perspective, as being the fire chief in this town for as long as I have, this is the best case scenario today. Let me look at it, I'm worried about something happening financially at Norwalk, and something that just disappeared, and what you do. And it has happened in the state, in the center. And after Delima, that board disappeared, walked in at five o'clock, took all their equipment out at five o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock, they put the city on some of the, I'm not saying North Central would do it. But I want to make sure you guys are well-prepared, and I want to prepare to serve something like that question. No scare tactics here, like I said, this is a tremendous amount of work.
If I, and if I could just, to follow up to what the chief said, and then I'm done, but, you know, I think he states it very well, in that there aren't no scare tactics here. We've looked at this very wide openly, and while we haven't called for a formal study and spent studies, I think the communication between administration and this council has done very good over the last three-hundred-and-sixty-four days, and, and that's been a goal of mine, and I hope it will continue to be. And while, while we haven't spent money, because I think all of you have heard me say at least one time or another in committee in a year, that spending money hand over fist for studies, that it ended up as us collecting publications on the shelf, we need to end that. My first week that I was here, I met with a consultant, and this group paid four-thousand dollars to produce studies, and you still didn't have a finished product. And so, I just bring that up, not to throw dirt at anybody, but to say that my push for anything, and it is, is in the best interest of the city, or what I believe is in the best interest of the city, and feel comfortable that we have a network between all of us in this room, have a network of contacts, direct. have a network of contacts throughout the state of Ohio and even the nation, where we can call people and say, hey, we're in this situation. What do you recommend? Over the weekend, I consulted with the head, the head of arguably, probably the busiest rural EMS system in the state. They are the largest tourist destination in the state of Ohio, short of our neighbors, Cedar Point, down in Logan, in Hockton County. They're the busiest. And we've talked about this problem, and we've gotten some guidance from them, and I've gotten some guidance and some education. So I'm only sharing that to say that, well, you know, I know the importance of three readings, and the need to do that, and have the ability to really savor some of these ordinances that come. I don't take it lightly when I ask that that's something we consider this time of season. Thank you.
Chief Johnson, the contracts you're looking at, you said the medical director would be three years. Any other contracts that would extend beyond three years? How does this bill could be reviewed?
Not at this point. And then the medical director has asked for three years. The contract, as much as we'll review, that there's some changes made to the contract. Not with regard to years, but the three years gives us an opportunity. I don't think that we can look at this thing again in October of 2019 and say, oh, shit, it's a bust. Can't do that. We're going to have to give this a second time, but agree a little bit, see what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. So the three, the three years is the only number that is out there.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Chief Johnson? You alluded to Bay and having taken over some of theirs possibly?
Bay?
Yeah.
We ran Bay back from north to central.
Do they still have any equipment there? That's what I was curious.
No one owns any of it.
Possibly be talking about?
Portage Township is willing to give us almost $5,000 to assist without a fund, and they, they're going to give us $5,000 to help with the initial equipment. Bay Township is willing to help here also. But where are they going? They're, they're just being used where they are because they have no other support. Portage Township got a levy on, and the North Central sent a letter. They pulled their levy on. Just so you know, that's on the front of all this one. They have a levy on about to go forward. Their country's run, so they're going to have to be pulled. Because it's, it's, like I said, we've got the help of this one, and they're both willing to, 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 to.
Counselor, does anybody else have any questions, comments? Twenty members of the public have any comments, questions? Mr. Fussback?
Does the cost for a call outside of the city, is it alcohol or is it the same cost?
Everything's the same. Everything, everything is the same. It gets billed. What?
I guess my question is...
What has been discussed with the townships? What's, what's the proper word? Not in session, when we've talked with them, there will be a charge, like it always was and past, a charge of the township itself every time this one is called, and then constituents could be billed. And that's what's being looked at now. But that's the way it was when Porter went down, Morish ran Portland EMS, and it was a charge, it was billed correctly, due to trust deeds.
But billing is a matter that will come back in full time for the council.
I'm just wondering, you know, if the city is occurring the largest cost and we're providing the all-in communities, I think there should be a...
We're looking at, that's one of the things.
It's not more to the service than with the city.
That is what's on the table.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Mr. Hatfield mentioned there was, while it was projection, hopefully I'm understanding this correctly, there was a loss. Is there an idea of what that, a dollar amount behind that loss?
Again, it's just real preliminary projections. There's still a lot to be done. Based on run value and what could potentially be collected as, as far as per run, and looking at personnel costs, which are going to be the majority of your expenditures, and then startup costs. I think my initial projection was a loss of around between $70,000 and $100,000. But I'll say a majority of that was projected based on initial equipment costs, which of course is kind of a one-time thing besides, you know, upkeep and maintenance and those same things. So that was kind of my initial projections. However, going back to what I stated before, with that projected $100,000, so I want to emphasize projected because there's a lot of variables there. We also knew that we would have potential $200,000 loss with continuing with North Central, given what they had presented previously. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Does the state ever get involved in this sort of thing? Or you don't want them involved? I don't know. Maybe it was a bad question.
Bad question.
Yeah, just one more comment I would make. We are the only fire department in Ottawa County that uses a brand switch. Everybody else knows what corners. So that's just one of the reasons I looked at it. Sorry, it's not getting more like that.
Chief, Mr. Hatfield, I'm happy to vote yes on thirty five eighteen. And we can take this up on the next finance meeting next week and look at your financial models and provide us further information more than we have time. I'd be appreciative. Visit next week. One of the biggest costs that we're looking at right now, we're changing thought process on there. I may have everything I mentioned, but it's about what it was on the table now. Everything that went under this, maybe comes up for the next week. I appreciate it. I believe there's some finance to do with it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Emergency services, Florence. Any other comments or questions from counsel? We've brought the ordinance. We have the wave of the three required readings. We had discussion. We did have that from Ms. Phillips and Mr. Hill. This council wishes to take, oh, excuse me. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance thirty five dash eighteen?
Madam President?
Ms. Phillips?
I wish to, I mean, I will motion to retain the emergency clause.
A motion to retain the emergency clause from Ms. Phillips. Second for Mr. Hill. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance thirty five dash eighteen?
Madam President, I move to adopt this, I think, ordinance thirty five eighteen.
A motion to adopt ordinance thirty five dash eighteen. Second for Mr. Hill. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty five dash eighteen has been adopted. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only ordinance thirty six dash eighteen?
Ordinance thirty six dash eighteen. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT cooperative. Purchasing a group program including the winter road salt contract. Authorizing a director, director of safety and service to execute all necessary required documents and agreements for petitionation, participation, and purchase of program in case of emergency.
Does counsel wish to take any action on ordinance thirty six dash eighteen?
Madam President?
Lisa Sardi?
I move that we waive the three required readings as to ordinance thirty six dash eighteen.
A motion to waive the three required readings?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bealow. Thank you. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Lisa Sardi?
This was discussed at the last infrastructure meeting. Mr. Martin, please explain what you like about that content.
As you're aware, we prepare this time of the year for the upcoming winter season and we're looking forward where we can source our materials. We previously, the borrowing that we get, we get through ODOT to the garden there. Had the opportunity to look at salt and the prices of salt. There's a, you know, as you were there, there's a new story last, last winter, the shortage of salt that's there. It's anticipated to be in shortage again this year. And Mr. Colston and I, speaking with the engineer's office and our ability to purchase cooperative with the county, their, their bids did not, weren't going the direction they anticipated. So on my understanding, and they suggested that we look towards the ODOT program. This came to me beginning of last week with a deadline that was very short. Contacted and spoke to Mr. Wilber and explained that situation that because there was a necessary resolution that I shared with counsel as exhibit to this ordinance that would need to be executed to force to participate. And before we do this, we have approximately seventy, seventy tons on hand. We looked over the last five years and anticipated a hundred tons. The problem with this program, knowing the shortage that is there, look towards purchase of three hundred tons. We would commit ourselves to that three hundred tons. And looking at where we're at from the line item, from what was purchased last year and what carries over into this season, about three hundred tons within the current budget. That's based upon what we anticipate on price. That's still variable that's there. That makes Mr. Hatfield cringe, but it's likely going to be anywhere in the upper, right around $100 a ton, I've heard. I've heard higher. The last two we paid sixty, I'll say around seventy, sixty to seventy dollars a ton. So that was the urgency of this. We do have a time deadline that never effective. And that was why I asked for the, to consider waiving the three hundred. So we can move forward through the state's system to give this side resolution back.
Counselors, your questions? Mr. Friedman?
Mr. Martin, you alluded to the price wasn't set in stone with the ODOT. The thing is there, if you signed the contract with them, it's just whatever they're going to sell it to you at?
It's a commitment. We have to make a commitment to be part of the purchase, the actual bid process.
Right, and as you're moving with Ottawa County, I know nobody actually bid. Ottawa County's salted due to the shortage.
That could happen with the ODOT crack as well.
Yeah, what the program was on this, it was disclosed anyway, was that you had to give them notice last week if you wanted to participate in it. And then if you wanted to draw, you have to let them know by October 16, you're going out to bid on the 19th. And you have to provide this legislative approval on it for November 2nd. So then you're committed, whatever you put in for, if they get a bid, you've got to buy what you requested.
Those dates are correct.
Yeah.
It is that three-day, they're going to bid it on the 19th, but we only, we have, we can't back out after the 19th. We have up until the 16th to back out. And this resolution had to be in by the 2nd of November. So that was the urgency rather than...
Further questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Does counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance thirty six dash eighteen?
Madam President?
Mrs. Sardi?
I move that we retain the emergency clause as to ordinance thirty six dash eighteen.
A motion to retain the emergency clause on thirty six dash eighteen?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bealow. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Does counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance thirty six dash eighteen?
Madam President?
Mrs. Sardi?
I move that we adopt ordinance thirty six dash eighteen. A motion to adopt thirty six dash eighteen.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bealow. Further discussion?
Madam President, as I had mentioned earlier, we did discuss this the last infrastructure meeting, and it was moved by Mr. Bealow, and seconded by myself, that we recommended to full council to adopt ordinance thirty six dash eighteen. As Mr. Friedman was not present at that time, so that's two disagreements.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dave Bealow?
Yes.
Phil Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Ryan Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillip?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty six dash eighteen has been adopted. The members of business from the floor, starting with Mrs. Sardi.
Thank you, Madam President. Two things I don't know, as Mr. Beal already mentioned, but the docs will be coming out approximately November 1st, and according to Mr. Colston, and that's going to look into modernizing the park depending on closing the rail streams, whether it's many. The tree plots are set downtown. Ottawa County will be placing, planting the trees, and Mr. Beal was on here to explain further, but the previous meeting said the best time to plant these wasn't in the fall. Open gym will start January 6th through March 17th, from twelve to three in the high school. Also, we'd like to thank the Girl Scouts for cleaning up Lakeview Park, Mrs. Scaff's class, for cleaning up Waterworks Park, and Leadership Council, Mr. Good's kids, for cleaning up the beach last week. That really helps, helped us out. Mr. Martin already announced some trick or treats, and I'd like to say happy one-year anniversary to Mr. Martin tomorrow. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Mr. Friedman?
Okay. You need a night, Madam President?
Ms. Phillips?
I think I've spoken enough today for this evening, but thank you so much to those who've spent all the time working on getting what we passed tonight through. It's a lot of work.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman?
Nothing, Madam President.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Chief Johnson and Martin for Mr. Wilber for the hard work on, on this endeavor. I think it's going to be pretty big for the city. And I know, like Ms. Beal said, it is a lot of work. We have been talking about this, I think, four or five months now. Some of that is in the executive session. I don't think there's anybody more qualified to speak on this than the chief himself. So appreciate all the work. We're looking forward to seeing, seeing some pretty productive here and, you know, having family and everything. I know that it's going to be, it's going to be something that's going to be really good for community. There's no doubt in any of our minds. So just want to thank you guys, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Madam President. The planning and development committee meeting will be rescheduled, and that's occurring tomorrow, October 10th, 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Finance committee will be next week, Tuesday, October 16th, 6:30. It's regularly scheduled time. We'll take a look at the financial models we discussed earlier for my department and this. Everybody who answered councils, and I'll speak for myself. Answered my questions tonight, thank you. I guess we can't ask questions in council about what we're passing. You guys can't answer, which I think you did tonight. It indicates probably a number of the basics. So thanks for putting up with it and answering our questions, especially when we haven't had a chance to take it out there in the face of the government. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Seeing none for the written?
Madam President, I move this August body of jury, second to thirty, out of favor.
Aye.